Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Village of Rydborough Planning Board Meeting. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here and all those people watching out there in TV land, I guess. My name is Rob Goodman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Our board members in attendance are John Gerzan, Donald Crum, Jeffrey Richman, and Amy Schoen. Scott Mendelson and Matthew Retner are excused for tonight. Also in attendance is our village attorney, Robert Zitt, our Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Nowak, our village planning consultant from Harnesie in Hanover. What is your name, sir?
Malcolm Simpson.
Oh, Malcolm, right. Malcolm Simpson. Thank you for coming.
He was here doing the planning.
And also, in spirit, we thank our Secretary Tara Orlando for all the work that she does behind the scenes to get us here and deal with the minutes and all the organizational activities that have to be done. So, thank you, Tara. And also, I always forget him, although he's the most important person in the room, David Heiser, our liaison from the Board of Trustees. Thank you for coming, David, even though I ignore you at least 50% of the time.
I've ignored my better friend.
Ah, touche. I'm not even going to come back to that. I deserve it. Okay. Our first agenda item are the minutes of, I think, July. Are there any amendments, notes to the minutes? I think it's July 11th.
I was reading. It was very nice how Michael and Dan kind of knocked down my suggestion. But then when I read the minutes of the meeting, I kind of was a little bit humorous that we do have the most stringent stormwater requirements in the universe. And every time there is a little rain, we have floods.
There you go.
I don't know what the heck is going on.
That's the reason why it's stringent. It would be worse, I guess, if it were less stringent. Maybe there'll be a training session.
I'm sure that what you said was correct, but it was just kind of fine.
Well, I would amend, if you want to amend the minutes, I would say residential. The commercial is very sort of middle of the road for New York State.
Okay.
But residential.
I thought, yeah, I would, yeah. I think that makes much more.
So you want to amend?
No, I really don't care.
Okay.
I thought it was just.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to adopt the minutes of July 11?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gerzan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Richman.
Yes.
And Schoen.
Epstein. I wasn't here. Oh, okay. Can't accept what I wasn't here to hear.
Chairman Goodman?
I thought you were protesting.
Four yeses. Thank you.
Okay. And our first item is on 900 King Street. Okay, give us the lowdown, so to speak, on what's going on with this application.
There we go. Hi, I'm Tony Veneziano. So, we're back again. Since the last extension you granted, there's been some activity. The monuments are, we resolved our differences with the village board regarding the valuation and the tax program. We've submitted an application to the IDA that needs to be refined and then processed. And we've executed a purchase and sale agreement with a company.
Louder, please.
Oh, yeah, you have to speak into the microphone.
We executed a purchase and sale agreement with a company called Sunrise Development. So Sunrise, and this is within the last six to eight weeks.
Okay.
Sunrise is one of the leading and largest owners, operators, and developers of senior housing in the country.
Yes, Sunrise.
They have 240 senior living communities that they own and operate, including more than 40 new properties that they developed over the last 10 years. So it's a very well-funded, very professional, they understand things, they're reviewing the plans, the architecture, et cetera. They also operate two communities in Westchester, one's in Crestwood, one's in Fleetwood.
They're in Stamford also.
State to New York. Yeah, they're all, they're all over the place. So they're involved, they're going through their due diligence, and I've been retained by them to come in. And one of the things we didn't do, I don't know if it was because of COVID or what, but we never finished with the ARB. So we need an approval from your board, need an approval from the village board in the next few weeks, and then we need the ARB approval. Our team, sort of the old team slash Sunrise is reviewing the plans. They're trying to keep the buildings where they were and just maybe deal with the facade. So once those decisions are made, we'll submit to the ARB, we'll get the ARB approval, we'll start to process the IDA approval, and we'll satisfy the conditions. There's six or seven things that I have to do, four or five are already resolved. And we'll be moving towards development, which will be the demolition, which I know the village wants in the summer. And they'll start their construction plans as soon as probably we get ARB approval. But they'll take a while, and then the village has to review them. So that's sort of the process. There has been progress. They're very active developers. They have four or five people on this project reviewing the due diligence. So that's where we stand. Yes.
What, is the structure going to be the same, or are they making changes outside?
The facade, they're reviewing the facade. I'm sure they'll have color, I'm sure they'll have their, whatever Sunrise develops. But as the building's held up, it's going to, right now, it looks like it's going to, all four corners of each of the buildings is remaining. So I think it's going to, for the most part, be the same. We don't want to go back and revisit height with the arbors, et cetera. Remember that whole discussion we had with?
Sure.
Right? It was torturous. So I think it's pretty much going to look the same. I don't know what they're going to put on it, but they have their internal architects and so forth. I got a memo today. They want to have a conference call with the architects to get, they're processing, they're starting to process the ARB, pick up that application to get that approved.
Okay. And Sunrise is willing to work with all the people that have been working on this project since the beginning, I assume?
Perkins Eastman is the architect there, remaining as the architect. John Meyer Consulting was the engineer there, the consultant, they're the engineer, and I'm still the attorney.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. And I gather, Robert, that there's a similar application pending before the Board of Trustees. Has that been acted on yet?
No.
No, that's still pending.
September 24th.
That will be on our next agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Right, right. Okay. Well, so when, it's an unfair question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. When do you think they're going to break ground on this? Another year, two years?
I think it will be a more pertinent question to ask, why the ground hasn't been broken in three years?
Well, they've been negotiating with the village over tax issues. There's been a lot behind the scenes are, you know, Robert, you may know, you may know more about it than I do.
I can't believe that three years after, the ARB hasn't acted on this yet. It's been three years today that we have given the approval.
Yeah, I don't have an explanation for that. Do you?
We had, no, that's on our side. So we were processing with the ARB. Somewhere between COVID and the end of our process, we pulled back. That will happen quite quickly.
Yeah, I would imagine so.
It should take a meeting, maybe two, but that should happen quite quickly.
Is that on their agenda right now?
No. Like I said, there's a letter here, I got a memo today from Perkins Eastman saying we have, we have to review these issues and interface this with the approvals to make sure it's okay. So they want my opinion on some of these things they've been working on.
Right, right.
So I would, I mean, that should go in very quickly.
Yeah.
Perkins Eastman's a very good.
I'm still a little puzzled, because if Sunrise comes in, Sunrise facilities have pretty much similar, each one has pretty much similar type styles. And I'm not sure if they make changes that the ARB should be the one to just say, okay. I mean, isn't, isn't that going to go before the Board of Trustees again, first?
If it needs to go to any, no, we are going to avoid both you and the village board. We're going to make decisions to avoid you. The four corners, my inference, the four corners of the building remaining the same was a queue, the building's the same. They might do different windows.
I guess I am probably, it's probably when you get old. But since, when did I miss it? Since when did the ARB get the approval authority? I thought they had the recommendation, requirements, or they had the approval authority. With respect to what?
Architectural Review Board has full approval authority over the exterior of the building with regards to the facade, the finishes, the windows, doors, trim. They have full review of that.
Does that come in line with the timing of the issuance of the construction permit? Or is that part of the site plan approval as a overall?
That comes prior, that comes after site plan approval and prior to building, and before building a permit.
That's right. Because, you know, the lead agency in this case is the Board of Trustees. It's a major project. We have a small responsibility with regard to the steep slopes and wetlands, which is insignificant. But we did have a major role in making our recommendation to the Board of Trustees before they issued the approval. It's just mind-boggling. Three years later, one of our board could be holding the project and making the changes to the project of this magnitude. I just don't see it.
I don't know whether they're making any changes to the project. I think the original.
If you're not going to make changes to a project, then what kind of approval are you having?
I, I think you may be misunderstanding what the approval is or what the authority is. In this case, if the new applicant or owner wants to do a stucco facade instead of a brick facade, that's not a site plan change. That's purely a facade change. If they want to do double-hung windows instead of whatever, I mean, a casement window, that's Architectural Review Board. If they want to have a port-cochet or not, that's Architectural Review Board. That doesn't fall under planning, because the building, the footprint, the site work, that's all the same.
But, but, but the ancillary things to the building itself are not part of the ARB. The plantings, the, all of that stuff.
Correct. But that falls under the site plan approval. ARB doesn't deal with landscaping.
That's right.
The, the planning board, their site plan already approved the landscaping, the restoration, the stabilization.
Assuming there are no changes. We approve a plan.
Well, as, as Mr. Veneziano's saying, the footprint of the building is staying.
Are they, are those changes going to be presented to us that apply to us?
All right. So Sunrise is my client for three weeks.
My.
I mean, I suspect, I suspect if I were them, considering that they don't, they are purchasing something that doesn't even exist yet.
Right.
That has gone through years and years of environmental review and negotiation. I would, they would be insane to start changing things. And I suspect they will let things ride and see how things go, get everything done, move in, start operations.
Start at something.
And then if they want to make changes down the road, like with any owner, they can try to make changes.
They have to come.
But I think to hold up the actual construction of the building.
Sure.
I don't think that's in their interest. I'm correct.
Well, with all due defense for the ARB, I don't believe the ARB is holding anything up.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm saying.
Or the applicant. I think that there were mutual things that both entities had to work on, and things got pulled back so both could work on.
No, no, I agree. I'm just saying that from the owner's perspective.
I'm not even talking about the building itself.
I don't think there are going to be significant changes that are going to throw a wrench in the, in the, you know, process of permitting, because, you know, they're, if they're purchasing, you know, facility sight unseen, you know, they want that built. They don't want to be delayed anywhere.
You can spin this any way you want. It doesn't sound right that three years later, after the board approved major project, that we have a sub-board with this village that is going to render a separate approval of its own. Okay? It just doesn't, doesn't, does not sound right. Okay?
Listen, I'm not here to get into a debate with the planning board, but it's no different than any other application. It's gone before the planning board, zoning board, and Architectural Review Board.
It's a time, Michael, three years later.
Yeah, I know, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to get into this discussion, but I believe that this is going down a different road than it needs to go.
Yeah, I agree. That's fine.
And if we need to have a discussion in an executive session with council to discuss this, then let's do that.
No.
To clear this out. But I believe that there's a little misunderstanding on who has what authority here, and I'm not going to get into that discussion right now. I just tried. But I think we're going down a rabbit hole that we don't have to.
I would agree. And the only thing that's before us is extending the, the authority of our, you know, of our decision from, you know, last year. I suspect the Board of Trustees will do it. This project needs to go forward. I think we have, within our jurisdiction, the ability to extend it for a year. I'd say let's do it.
Well, we already extended it.
If we don't extend it, then it's going to creep up.
I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't extend it. By all means, we should.
Yeah.
Okay? I still think that our extension is meaningless if the Board of Trustees does not have given extension to the site plan approval, because our project does not exist if there is no site plan approval.
Well, look, that's, that's, that's why I asked about the status of the board, the application pending before the Board of Trustees. But I can almost guarantee you, and we have a liaison from the Board of Trustees here, that they are going to extend whatever permits have been issued to allow this project to go forward.
So can we, can we condition our extension this evening with the assumption that the board would provide their extension within a two week?
I don't think it makes any difference. I think we, we extend it for a year, and if the Board of Trustees, in their infinite wisdom, decided not to, well, that's the end of it, because there's site plan approval. I mean, we're only extending, you know, our, our portion, which is just wetlands and steep slopes. So I would say let's just give the extension.
Mr. Chairman, you're looking at this as two separate projects. I like to look this all as one.
All I know is that there's an application before us to extend the authority we have granted, the applicant, to pursue a steep slopes and, you know, wetlands permit. And that's the only thing that is before us. I don't, I understand this project has been going on for a long time, but I also understand that it's the interests in the village that get it done, and I don't want to inhibit it. So, you know, unless there's, you know, further discussion about this, the ability for us or the, that we should somehow not give an extension or limit the extension, then we should adopt it and approve it.
I think by all means, we should give an extension.
Okay.
But I think, and I know that Mr. Veneziano could not give us any assurance this evening that this thing is going to start this coming summer with the demolition. But, you know, even when we were looking to approve the project, I think, you know, sometimes there was some concern, at least on my part, and I'm sure there's probably others' part, that, you know, was there, you know, how is this going to go forward? Is there a need for this project? Or, you know?
I know, but that's all, but John, that's all water, that's all water under the bridge.
But also, you know, the four years have gone, five, now it's almost six years, if you're going to look at the beginning. And I'm sure there are consequences to the village if this thing doesn't go forward. You know, we would just have a dormant property there for all design.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say one thing?
Uh, yes, sir.
So we, Sunrise and my client have met with the mayor and the village administrator.
Oh, well, I'm sure that there's been some.
They know what's going on. We're on the 24th. I told Chris today, it's going to move forward, it's going to be fine. And by saying that Sunrise is in contract, it's a very substantial, it almost ends the discussion of whether this is going forward or not.
Of course.
Just a matter of how fast. And they're coming in, they're very thorough. Once they submit to the ARB and start processing, this will move pretty quickly. It's a very professional group.
But would they be the new owner of the property or the builder? Who, what's the Sunrise, what's their role in the project?
Sunrise will, if they buy, if they purchase it, it's a purchase and sale agreement. Should they purchase it, they will own it and operate it. There's also a provision in there for a joint venture where, et cetera, but I'm pretty sure that they're going to own and operate it.
But right now, who is the potential builder on this project?
You'd hire a builder. Contractor, you mean?
No, who is the owner that's actually going to?
Sunrise.
Sunrise. They're a, they're a huge organization.
They're huge. 240 community. They're very large.
I mean, that's their business. That is strictly their business.
That's all they do.
Look, I, I, I think.
A publicly traded company.
I think that there's, a lot of discussion about this. Does not have to be on the record before the Planning Board. I think if there are concerns, they should be brought to representatives of the Board of Trustees. We can talk to David about it. He can sort of bring it to the attention of the mayor if there are, if there are issues that we're really concerned about relating to the processing of all this. But I think for our purposes, we have a limited application before us. I'd say let's deal with it so that we can provide services to the next applicant who's been waiting very patiently on this. So unless there is, yeah. Hmm? Of course. Come on up.
Part of my lack of dignity.
Oh, no, you have plenty of dignity.
He hadn't noticed, David.
I was at last week's meeting, and it was very productive. They had representatives of Sunrise, which I keep thinking should be called Sunset, given the nature of its business.
Of course. Which is the reason why they, they don't call it Sunset.
That's a negative, David. Sunrise is surprising.
Peter Duncan was there, and we got the impression that the changes that they were talking about were internal changes. Is the bathroom going to be here? Is the bathroom going to be here? Is the hallway going to be here? Things like that. There were no changes in height, no changes in the number of units, no changes in the overall look of the building.
What about the townhomes?
No changes that, that we are concerned about. What we wanted them to do, and they agreed to, is to expedite filing with the ARB and expedite, get the application for the IDA. So we, our goal in two weeks is to try to grant that extension that they're going to want, but we would like them, if at all possible, to get the demolition done when school is not in business.
Right, right.
Whether that will be possible, I just don't know. Nor do I have an idea how long it takes demolition to do.
Right. I mean, it's a very big facility that's sitting there right now.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the school is out for two, two and a half months. I don't know if demolition can be accomplished in that period of time.
Right, understood.
But we did have a really productive meeting last week.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like everyone is on the same page on this, which I think is, was of concern to us. But that being said, unless there's any other comments relating to the application. Any further comments? No?
No.
I have a motion to, to adopt, approve the application for an extension of a year.
Moved.
Second.
You don't have to. So, you know, moving forward, because I know you guys don't like long-winded resolutions.
Okay.
I think there's a way to streamline it. You just make a motion to adopt the resolution as drafted.
Okay.
In a final form, subject to council's approval. This way, it spares me from having to bore you with the whole resolution unless the board's preference is that I read it.
It's just an extension.
Yes.
So I, I assumed verbiage.
You know, resolutions generally, if you guys want to change that.
Provided by council is sufficient. Okay.
I move that.
Okay. All right. We're ready to vote.
Mr. Gerzan.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Richman.
Yes.
Mr. Schoen.
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much. We heard what you said. We'll, we'll move as quickly as we can. Thank you.
I know you will. It's probably not just us either.
Demolition is mostly, the building will come down, but there's especially, it's the approvals you need before the testing and the approval. So we'll get on that. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, our next matter is 35 Metal Arc Road.
I guess I'm getting good at this part.
Yeah, there you go.
I don't know about that, though. All we can do is try. Okay, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Schwartz's, who live at 35 Metal Arc. And it's a large lot. It's an interesting lot, because it's got an easement, the utility easement cutting through it on an angle, which makes it challenging to add to and renovate the house. They've actually been looking for a couple of years to buy a different house to fix and make bigger. And we looked at, I mean, so many houses they've dragged me to, and like, they've lost out bids, and it's just, it's been like a nightmare. And I was like, well, this, you know, it has some challenges, but I think we can make this house actually work and not move and, and get closer to the house that they're trying to.
John, this gas line easement, 25 foot.
Yes.
That belongs, the owner owns the land, and of course, you cannot develop within the 25 foot of the gas line.
Exactly. I mean, other than like, there are driveways on it, but like, driveways and stuff can be on it, but no building.
Now, did the line, gas line come after the current home was built or before?
I want to say it was, I'm thinking it was after, but I don't really, I have no idea.
I mean, the, the agreement that Mike was kind enough to send us, which is April 2020.
Right.
That was just a use, that was just a use agreement.
Yeah, that's just a use agreement for what's there. I mean, I'm here.
So the easement goes back.
Yeah. I'm here 20 years, and that pipeline's been fixed for 20 years.
How much hardship has been caused to the owners of the property? How much hardship does the easement?
Well, the easement causes the hardship on adding to the house.
Yes.
Because we're limited on expanding, because it runs kind of close to the back and it comes across it. So they have a really nice building envelope, but it's cut by this 25-foot easement that most people don't have, and it's kind of unique, and the lot is big, and it's kind of like, I think we can make it work with a few variances that are, I think, are reasonable other people have gotten. I don't think anybody driving by there would even notice the house doesn't conform in theory. So, so we can go through what, what we're suggesting, and then I know we need to go to zoning to get our variance for the front yard set back and the existing non-conformity of the right side. We need your approval, you know, and stuff, so.
Actually, I was thinking of this when, when we had our pre-agenda meeting, but with the owners, I would like sort of a site visit, to arrange a site visit to your property. So, because I'm one that cannot read plans or look in three dimensions of anything. And I want to see where this easement is, and then maybe we can be taken through how you're trying to manage, you know, that impediment.
On the side.
And that'll make things, I think, a lot clearer for us, because I'm, you know, I'm reading the plans. It makes sense to me, but I, but I don't have a sense of how big the lot is.
Right, right, right.
How much is there that is going to be added. I do note that, that the amount of impervious surface is going to be less.
Yes.
I don't know how you're doing that.
Well, we're getting rid of a huge driveway that comes all around the house, and we're putting it in the front, so the driveway's going to get a lot smaller, and the addition is pretty, the additions less than.
Why don't you take us through? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's, that's fine. So, all right, so I'm going to show you photos of the house, so this way you can see, so that's what it looks like from Metal Arc. That's, yeah, that's the front. And then the driveway kind of comes in from the side, and the garage right now is an basement, which is one of the things we're trying to change, because it's not always most desirable to have your garage in your basement. And we also can get rid of the driveway and get more usable space in the rear of the house. So right now, it's the ranch house, and that's, and then the backyard, you go back down.
Okay, I know. I got it.
So we're trying to develop the upper backyard a little bit more around the house, and it's more usable right at the house. So we walked around the house.
Now, you're going to add a floor. You're going to add a floor?
Adding a second floor.
Yeah, adding a second floor.
So that easement says 75 feet, right?
75. Where is, where is that?
No, that's, the easement's not 75. That's the back, that's from the property line to the house, is 75.
It says on the plans, on the survey plan, it says 75-foot easement, white easement, on the survey plan.
John, we noticed this sort of during the, during the pre-meeting.
This is my site plan. That's.
No, I understand that, but the, but the, but the easement itself, it's actually 75 feet. The marking that you have is 25 feet to the. No, I, I understand that, but the, but the, but the easement itself, it's actually 75 feet. The marking that you have is 25 feet to the actual line, the gas transmission line. The easement itself is actually 75 feet.
Oh, okay, so it goes further into the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, I mean, it's not.
It's all the way up to the property line.
Right, and this, right, and the south.
So what, what is the actual width of an easement?
The width of this?
The actual width of the easement.
Seventy-five feet.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a large one.
Yeah, I, I, wow, that's large.
Well, they do it large to get access, like, but the easement is to have access over that amount of property, not necessarily the rest of the area.
Right, right.
Now, are, are you aware of the pressure in that pipeline?
I mean, I don't know the exact calculations, but we know.
It could be like 20 to 50 times higher than a distribution line. I mean, that is a serious pipeline. 24 inches in diameter. I mean, it's been there a long time. I don't wanna, you know, scare anybody, but it's serious. As owners, you're aware of that, right? Right, no, I know. It's, it's like a pinhole risk, but it's catastrophic. Like, that easement is probably.
Don't scare them, please.
No, I mean, no, I'm, just, just Google, I used to develop natural gas plants. Natural gas plants, you know, this is a high-pressure interstate transmission line. You know, it's 2,000 miles long ultimately and it's between, I don't know the exact pressure, but it's over 200 PSI, whereas local distribution is something like 10 PSI. It could be as high as 1,000. I don't know all the details, but it is serious. The 75 width may not even be what they would allow today. So don't, my comments are gonna be about safety because if you look at the protocols, the use agreement says you may not touch anything in that right away without a rep from the gas company, not the local gas company. The transmission gas company being on site, they're talking about when you take pavement away and there's a lot of pavement to take away on the driveway, they're, they're talking about you can't go lower than a foot below the surface and having to have reps on site. That's in the existing agreement. I'm not making this up. So, I mean, it's incredibly serious.
But that was the question that I asked. What came first, the gas line or the home?
Given the dri- I, I have questions about the providence of the driveway, but you wouldn't think they would ever, that the driveway, a piece of the driveway actually looks like it's on top of the pipe. So it's possible that they, they dug the, the pipe under it or something, you know, they have ways to do that. It's also possible that it's very deep and not a concern, so I don't really know how deep it is there. I mean, maybe it's, you know, 30 feet deep there. I don't know. But I've looked at the, I've looked at the regs. It's regulated by the federal government, it's regulated by the state government. You know, this interstate pipeline, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, if you go on, if you, if they need to make any changes to the safety or the operation of that pipeline, they have to file permits with the federal government and the state government. It's, it's highly regulated. I mean, it's, it's serious. I'm just saying it's serious. And so, I mean, when we do things like construction plans, like sometimes if there's environmental stuff, making builders file extra, you know, plans with the village on how they're gonna do stuff, not just what they're gonna do, how they're gonna do it. I'm, I'm expecting, and if they don't, I would think the village would want it, exactly how is that driveway gonna be removed? How is, where is this, if there's any construction equipment on the site, where is it gonna be staged? You cannot, for instance, have heavy construction equipment on top of that pipe. You know, it's, you just, you just look at that use agreement and read the fine print, the 2020 use agreement. It's, it's not boilerplate. Like, it's, it's serious. I mean, am I, does anybody else have more?
I don't know. I, look, it's, you know, we went over it a little bit ourselves and it's, it's relatively restrictive. So, you know, there may be some value in bringing the gas company in just to make sure that everything is okay with what it is that you guys are planning to do and.
Mr. and Mrs. Schwartz, do you have use of that property right now? Can you, if you have kids, for example, would they, and I hope you do, can they play on top of the pipeline? They can, right? So you have no restrictions from the gas company?
Read the use agreement.
Yeah.
That place area is even not in the use agreement. Play equipment that's anchored into the soil would be a violation of the play agree, of the use agreement.
So the swing set.
The swing set, to the extent that's at all anchored or dug into the soil at all. I mean, I'm not talking about a little type thing that sits on top of the soil. I understand you have use to traverse over the soil, but I've looked at the use agreement and that play area is not on the use agreement.
I like your idea of having the gas company.
No, so it's.
I lived across the street and, you know, the pipe runs through into the arbor.
I understand.
My, my understanding was that the pipe, and I don't know if this plan shows exactly where the pipe was, but I thought the pipe was to the left of their driveway where their lawn is.
That's not what it shows. It shows it being underneath the corner of the driveway.
A few years ago, they came and they cleared like all the trees and stuff like that from the area so they can see it from above, you know.
Right.
And when they cleared it, I, I remember it being to the left of their driveway, like 25 feet to the left of their driveway.
Well, as an example, per the use agreement, you're not even allowed to plant trees in that zone. Right. So, I mean, it's, I understand the use, but it's very restrictive. I mean, it's safety. Again, it's been, we've had this pipeline in the community, what is it, 1965 or before with that incident, but it is very high pressure, very large diameter, very large volumes of gas going through there. And it's, again, it's, it's a very serious thing. I mean, you, if anybody were to hit that line, it would not be, it would not be a small thing. It would not be a small thing.
Well, does it make sense? Well, I mean, is there anything about, have you, have we been in contact with the, the gas company?
I have emailed the plans to their main office in Connecticut and they are reviewing the plans.
Okay, so they're, okay, so they're reviewing the plans because
That's great, that's great.
they may, they may wanna have some input on whenever construction is going to proceed just because of the, you know, the safety concerns that have been raised. But, but, you know, you know, let's talk about what you're, I'm still not quite, you know, you still haven't had the chance to articulate exactly what you're gonna do.
Yeah, sorry to.
And, and, and.
I, I think just, you know, the way, listening, it looks to me like the easement is 75 feet wide. Then there is a 25-foot buffer zone, right?
No.
What is the 25 feet?
That's to the.
That's where the, the pipe is logically located, the one it's located.
It's just showing that evidently the pipe is not like 33 feet from the easement edge. It's 25 feet from the easement.
But on this particular survey, I see a, I see a dimension of 75, then Tennessee, you know, dash line, if that's the pipe, so be it. And then there is a 25 feet and then, all right, so what's that 25 feet? Is that like a wetland buffer zone?
No.
That's an approximation from the house to the pipe.
Okay, so that's not part of the easement?
No, it's on the easement.
It is, it is part of the easement.
It's the buffer.
So if you look here, here's the edge of the house.
Yes.
From the edge of the house to the approximate location of the pipe is 25 feet.
Is 25 feet, yes.
The easement is a 75-foot.
Includes that.
Including the.
Favors the left side.
Including the 25. So that's 75, oh, okay, that's the whole, I'm sorry, I was, I thought 75 was from the pipeline. I, I got you. I, my apology. I got you. I understand.
Right, so the pipe's not in theory in the middle of the easement.
The line is not in the middle of easement. That's the way it's shown, yeah.
Okay, John, sorry for all these interruptions.
That's fine. I mean, we, we need to go through the questions, so, they're valid questions, so we did send it to the, so he did send it. We'll see what the gas company.
I sent it on Thursday.
So the concept here is, this is the existing house. I could mark here. I forgot about this, right? So, so this is the existing house, which we're, we're just putting a second floor on. So we're not changing anything under it other than our plan is to put a deck off this corner of the house. And then because we're trying to get the garage not in the basement, our concept was to build a two-car garage off to the side of the house. I pulled it forward. Five feet in front, I pulled it in front of the house and then I was putting a front porch in front of the existing house.
And that's the thing in dispute?
So, so this is the thing that's getting closest to the easement line, or this is the new construction that's, that's on the site. The rest of, putting a second floor on the house really is irrelevant because we're not changing anything below us.
You, you're keeping the existing footing, right? The foundation?
Keeping the existing foundation, the existing first floor we're keeping, we're just renovating.
So that shouldn't be an issue, yeah.
So the whole second floor really is probably a non-issue. We only have the existing non-conformity of the left side of the house, which is supposed to be 15 feet and it's 14.8.
Now, with the garage, there's no garage now. The garage is.
Garage is in the basement.
The garage is in the basement.
Drive under the house to get to the garage. And the driveway right now is, right now, this is the driveway here. So the driveway actually drives, drives under, drives into the easement.
Drives into the easement.
Right, so we drive over. The driveway's over the easement.
So would.
So our thought was we get rid of the asphalt on the easement and then it's just grass.
Right.
Which if anybody has to go in and dig or do something, like, there would only be dirt on top of whatever's there and then the driveway's smaller in the front of the house. That's how we reduce the, the lot coverage.
Well, that's, I mean, I think, I think that is sort of like.
They're removing, they're removing the driveway.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of Dawn's concern.
But it's right now, it's in the easement, right?
It's in the evening.
Yes, so.
Or I guess we could keep it as a sports court if we were really afraid that we couldn't move, remove the driveway.
Right, that'll, you have to discuss with the gas company.
That would be another, I guess, option. I would, I would think having an easement and having it all dirt would make more sense, but, but if, I mean, I don't think removing a driveway should be that difficult because we're only talking about like item four and a driveway, so it's, it's not like we're removing a structure or something.
If you build a new garage,
Right.
can you construct the driveway that would be completely off the easement?
Yeah, it is. The driveway would be off the easement because the driveway's gonna be.
Is that an proposed, yes?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So, so, and we could also play right now, they want, kinda want the garage and, and more storage and so, I mean, we could, if we had to pull the garage a little more forward to have a little bit more buffer on the easement, that we could probably work, tweak something to try to make that work, maybe pull it a little more to the front if, if we feel that that's an issue and adjust the numbers. So, you know, there are, but that's what the concept was, add the garage to the side of the house.
Right.
So it's that garage, that garage that would go, that would require about nine-foot variance, correct?
Right, to the front, to the front yard and the front porch because if we go to the, what the hell, let's go, let's go.
And that's kind of necessitated because the, of the easement.
Because they can't move back. They can only.
Like on a normal house, we could have maybe pushed out the back. We could have, you know.
Yeah, 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 but you, but you wanna clear the easement, so you've gotta move everything forward.
Right, we can't, we can't build on the easement.
Right.
And then like, could we make the driveway still enter the garage from the side? I mean, I guess in theory you could, but then we need a bigger driveway and like, it just makes more, like, in my mind, it just makes more sense to have the two garage doors on the front, smaller driveway, get off the easement. So that's why we did it the way we did it.
Right.
So, so the only real footprint change on the house is the front porch, which is in the front, that's, has that to do with the easement and then it's the garage. So this is the only piece we're really foundation, digging and putting in. It's gonna, you know, it'll be, the, the footings have to go down 40, 42 inches. That's like, but it's gonna be a slab on grade. We're not like putting a basement, like, it's, it's the least that we can put over there and, and we felt, you know, it wasn't that intrusive. And it made the house look good and then we did the front porch and then we basically just added over the footprint of the house. And we just kind of had hip roof. We did some cables in the front to soften it. So I think coming up and coming around the bend, like the one-story, two-car garage sticking out for the, the front porch or on the curb, I don't really think anybody's gonna notice that that house is that much closer to the road than, than the rest of the house as far as planting it with the name on it. And the roof lines and the architecture, we thought, kind of, we were trying to do a soft house and not make it look that bold. So that's what, so that's what, you know, those are our issues.
Okay. Well, I gather, have you, have you filed an application with the ZBA yet for the variance?
I did, but I need your approval to go there.
Oh.
Your referral.
Right.
I need your referral, but I had, did we have the application all set?
Okay.
Good.
Right, because we'll, because what we'll do, well, at least what I propose, is that we of course make the referral, but we also set a public hearing for next month so that if everything goes smoothly, you know, we can adjudicate the application next month and not waste any time. I wanna sort of move forward.
Chairman, can we do anything to help the applicant in front of the zoning board? Because I keep looking at this property, what a hardship that is.
Well, I mean.
The transmission line has caused.
I mean, I need to present to them and it's their job to decide whether it's a hardship or not. I think everybody's gonna notice it's a hardship and I mean, they look at the hardship and look at what you're building, how you're building it, what it's gonna look like.
Well, I mean.
I don't think they need to recommend, I mean, you could always give a positive recommendation.
I can't imagine that they would say no.
John, does the non-conformity have to do with the fact that it's on a court and your next house is setback? Cause I know I had that issue when I.
No, I think, I think the non-conformity on the right side of the house is just when it was built or the new surveyor, the new surveyor lost space. Like, it's just, it's slightly off. It's just really, I think, the newer survey from, from when the house was built is just.
More accurate, probably.
Is more accurate or less accurate.
You know, but.
One used to think that surveys were, were like always the same. And I have one project that was in Rybrook that we had three surveys over like 30 years. And the setback off that side yard was just three different, three different.
Figures, right.
Three different figures. And it was like, we had, we just went with the new, they had to pick the new one to just like go with the variances because it was like, it was mind-boggling. It's not always accurate, so the number's slightly off and we're just gonna get the variance to work off the survey.
Okay, Robert, we have a resolution for.
Yeah, I just, one, one other thing I, I think that the board should address was that the survey that I saw was from 2020. Is that, is that right, John?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Do you want me to update it?
Well, you said you wanted the TOPO added, so we, we need to update it with the TOPO.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I would do that.
Are we talking about the resolution to refer to the zoning board or the resolution to?
Well, I think we're just, I think we're just asking the applicant to, to do that. I don't think that's pursuant to.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, I was going back, not, not, not the mapping question. I'm sorry, was the next resolution gonna be the one to refer to the zoning board?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna refer to the zoning board, so.
All right. This one I'll read. Whereas John G. Scarlato Architects submitted an application on behalf of Scott and Stacy Schwartz, the applicant for site plan approval for the proposed construction of a new second-floor addition, side addition of a two-car garage, a new front porch, new rear deck and interior renovations at an existing single-family residence on the property located at 35 Metal Arc Road. Whereas pursuant to the building inspector's notice of disapproval dated August 7th, 2024 and revised September 9th, 2024, the applicant requires certain variances. And whereas the applicant desires to pursue those variances before the ZBA, now therefore be it resolved for the reasons set forth in the written resolution. Village of Rybrook Planning Board hereby refers the application to the ZBA for the listed variances.
Okay, unless there's any desire to discuss any modifications to the resolution, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution?
Moved. Second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I skipped Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. And the next issue relates to scheduling a, a public hearing, which I think we should do. I, I, I think it'll move the application along. If for whatever reason we're held up, we can always adjourn the hearing.
Right, because that's what we could open it as.
It will, it will, yeah, I.
Or if you need more information, we can at least start it and then.
Exactly. I just don't wanna, yeah, I just don't wanna just have to wait for the ZBA and then schedule a public hearing. I think it's a waste of time.
I appreciate that because it wastes the next one.
Okay.
I, I think in my mind, the key here is gonna be that pipeline looks at the plans and they have no problem. I think that that's really, yeah. I think to me that's, and let's hope the zoning board would look at the hardship and go in a positive direction.
I think the zoning board will, will, will approve it. I'm not thinking they won't, but, but if they don't approve it, then that saves you because then you don't have to do anything.
Well, let me ask you, would you build a second story without leaving the garage where it is now?
Yes, I, so we do have the option, like, you know, money or if approval's an issue, like, we could get the variance for the front porch and, and get the front yard setback and not do the garage. So you, and leave the garage in the basement if that really became an issue. So there are opt, yeah, so there are options. And we still, we need the right variance in the front for the porch and not do the garage. we need the right variance in the front for the porch, and not do the garage, if, let's say the gas company said we couldn't do the garage.
See, I, I-
Or maybe we have to go to a one-car garage versus the two.
See, maybe, maybe you, just, sorry to interrupt, but maybe you want to wait for the input from the gas company, because I, for one, would favor what you've got, the new thing. I think continuing to drive effectively over the gas pipeline is much more problematic. I would be willing to testify, I'm not an expert, but testify to-
And I get my variances from the front, and then they say, I can't do it, right? The variance is only for the porch, and then we leave the garage where it is. So, it's not like, if I get the approval, I have to use it.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 you're, you're-
But I, I, I think I agree with that. This plan makes more safety reason than what you have now.
No, that's what I felt, like, if you have an easement on your property, it'd be nice to not be driving over, just have it adjourned.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
They need to do something.
Plus, let me just say, if you leave the driveway where it is, you're, you're probably increasing the, what is it called? The drainage, right? The impervious.
Well, right, I'm reducing the-
So if you leave the driveway, reducing, taking that driveway out, you're reducing the impervious. If you leave the impervious, there's only a four-hundred, you know, you've worked here, four-hundred square feet, which you're gonna exceed, then you're gonna need Coltechs. And then I would ask you, looking at the site plan, and looking at the slope of the plan, where would the Coltechs go? Because I can't go in the seventy-five-foot zone.
They can't be in the easement, yeah.
So, then where would you put the Coltech, you know what I mean? So it's-
What we are really saying from the planning perspective, it makes sense to give the variance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure this, I'm not sure any of this makes any sense without the variance. And without this plan.
Yeah.
I think it's a very good plan to make everything better. And if you get into the cascading thing, where now you need-
For sure.
-Coltechs, you're on a hill, again, that, it, I don't see any downhill spot where you could put it, that's not in the easement.
No, I mean, I, I, that's kind of like the, I always try to come in with logical, make, make sense, and work.
John, Mr. Scarlato, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board, but if it's worth, at least on my behalf, you can say to the zoning board that the planning board prefers your plan, with the variance.
Well, there's really not much I can do without the variance, because I can't build it.
Can we put that in our referral?
Where I can't build it.
Isn't there, aren't, aren't there in the, in the zoning board resolution, aren't there like, like, planning board considerations?
Well, there is, there is a space that they left, that they can put this line-
So you can do that, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, you can, I mean, you know, you, you can, you can put something in, Robert, we, and you can circulate it to me, and I'll take a look. About, I think, some notation that, you know, in view of the easement, the plans, you know, as presented, seem to reasonably address, you know, the, you know-
I suspect it's not gonna be that hard to do.
That's fine, it makes them feel better, too, that you're in line with it.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Have you, I, I'm sure you've given some thought to construction management, how are you going to, how, how is the second floor gonna be built? How are you gonna, how are you gonna manage this, this easement that you can't put any equipment on?
I mean, they're gonna have to just do all the work from the front of the house, which I don't think is that difficult, because the backyard then also becomes a hill, so I'm not quite sure they're gonna go in the back that much anyway, so most of the work will just-
Clearly, you're not gonna be able to bring the crane over the, over the pipeline, that's for sure.
No, but they shouldn't really need the crane to, I mean, it's a fairly normal second floor, so I'm not, I mean, mostly they would do it from the front. If they have brought a crane in, they'd do it from the front anyway, they'd, they'd do it off the road. But, I'm not, I mean, it's a fairly normal house, the spans are pretty normal construction, so it's, it's, it should be fairly easy.
I mean, they may give you a corridor. It says, "Owners shall not operate or permit the operation of any heavy equipment on the company easement without the company's prior written consent, which the company may withhold on condition in its sole discretion. Heavy equipment shall only be allowed to cross company facilities at locations designated by the company. Owners shall comply with all precautionary measures." I mean, it's possible that they could give you some sort of very close into the building or something.
Right, they could give us an area that we could go on easement.
And, you know, and with a steel plate covering, I'm sure.
Right. And it's, and it also says, I mean, suggestion to build it into your budget, that they may have a rep there the entire construction period.
Oh, not anyone.
Owner shall construct, um-
But, but insofar as Mike has already sent the plans to them, I, I think that it's really, you know, what they want to do now, it's, they've been notified about this.
No, we need to figure out what-
They see the plans, it's really up to them to decide, you know, how serious they, they want to-
Right, and what's involved.
And what's involved. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be the ones to guess and assume, they're the experts.
Right.
If they think that there's a concern, let them send a rep. You know, if they have an issue with the plans, let them speak up.
Right, or tell, let us tell them what, what to do, it, we need to do, we need to do.
You know, it says, "A company rep shall be on-site to monitor any construction activities within twenty-five feet of the company's facilities." I don't know whether they mean the pipe, or they mean the easement. "Owner shall notify company's damage prevention manager at least seventy-two hours prior to commencing any construction activities."
Do you recall if we had, you know, this, this gas line traverses the village, did we have another application where we were close on top of the line? I don't recall, how did we handle it?
Well, the only other application that you had was the one on Lincoln Avenue, which was on the facility itself, so they managed themselves.
Well, that was their own line, yeah.
Yeah, so that was the only other one, but I don't recall in the years I'm here that we had someone with the pipeline.
I don't recall either, in all the years I've been here, I don't remember doing that.
Well, it was probably the closest house to the pipeline.
I don't recall any, either.
I've, I've looked at the, a lot of it seems to traverse through, on, you know, underneath public streets. So it's unusual that it goes through neighborhoods.
But, you know, that was my question, you know, under normal circumstances, if the house was there, it would be very difficult to put this gas line so close to the existing home. So I kind of suspect that the line was there before the home.
Yeah.
Well, back when these homes were built, you know, things were a lot easier to get approved.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no.
No, there's no, there's no specific prohibition you, about building right up to the edge of the easement. Like, even now, there's no, like, the gas companies, these transmission companies are very flexible, let's say, because they, you know, there's, they want to get their pipelines through communities.
Right, and they, they need, and the reason is, they need the access to get in to fix or repair or maintain, so they need to get in there, so they get the whole point.
But, but, but again, it's, it's way beyond repair, maintain. This thing is, if, because it's out of sight, I just want to emphasize, like, if this was a transmission line, it would be one of those enormous towers. You know, right, we understand the electric distribution between a local lines and those huge towers. This would be a huge tower electric line. Because it's out of sight, now, for all I know, it's fifty feet underground, and the gas company's gonna go, yes, but, so, let's see what they say. But, this is not a regular gas line, this is not a regular sewer line, this is not a regular water pipe, this is not a regular set of electric cables. This is a very, very high-pressure, twenty-four-inch diameter pipe, it's huge, filled with high-pressure natural gas, which, if you hit it in the wrong spot, can explode. I, I just want to emphasize that, because I'm saying this at the, no, I'm, I'm saying this at the, I'm sorry, I'm saying it at the beginning of the project, it's, it's a, we, we put all these notices out to the community on such, I'm planting a tree, I'm gonna put a notice, the planning board, I'm gonna put a hedge, I, you know, I'm at the edge of a water course, I'm on a steep slope, we noticed the heck out of it. This is a public safety concern, I'm not saying it can't be done reasonably, safely, et cetera. No, but I'm just saying this is not to be taken, in my opinion, this is not to be taken lightly. This is not to be taken lightly.
Well, I think, I think the, I think what-
I think, I think we need to investigate.
Make her nervous, John.
Okay. Well, I'd rather make you nervous now than after you've spent your money.
Look, and I think, look, and I think the point, I think the point is, is that, without discussing this at all, a homeowner could get the false impression that this is not a very big deal, and they may go ahead and do the construction without contacting the gas company, and no one would really know the wiser. But because of the, the potential scale of the, of a problem that could be created by this, it's just really a message to take it seriously, the village did the right thing in contacting the gas company and being proactive about it, which they should get credit for, and, and will get instructions from the gas company as to how to manage this. If they, now, if they don't care about it, then they don't care about it. I mean, they know what's underneath the ground. But, but I, I think, you know, everyone has done the right thing in terms of mediating this risk. You now know about it, and know the potential scale of it. The village has done its thing in contacting the gas company, your, your architect is, is well-advised of this, we are aware of it. So I think it'll all work its way out fine, and nothing is gonna happen. But, you know, you, you have to walk into a construction project with your eyes wide open, knowing all the risks. And so now we do know that, and we have the benefit of our engineers here. That's the beauty of the planning board. It's not just a bunch of friggin' lawyers here, okay? We have people that actually build things, and know what they're doing when it comes to dealing with these sorts of facilities.
The very fact that you have such a restrictive language in a use agreement suggests that, you know, we're dealing with something that could be dangerous, it doesn't mean you should move out of your house tonight, please, okay? If everybody does their thing, you are going to be safe.
It's calling, it's called fiduciary responsibility, and it is called due diligence.
Due diligence, right. I'm not worried about it all now, or when you finish.
There you go.
Well, we're happy to live in there during this, so.
Good, good idea.
I just want to finish this off, because we do have a public hearing notice to, public hearing to schedule, so. Who has the resolution? Malcolm, you do? All right. Do your thing.
Whereas the applicant, Scott and Stacy Schwartz, submitted an application for approval of a site plan proposing the addition of a second floor, a side addition for a two-car garage, a new front porch, and a rear deck on the existing dwelling unit located at thirty-five Meadowlark Road. Therefore, be it resolved, the planning board of the Village of Rybrook will hold a public hearing on October tenth at six-thirty at Village Hall in a virtual format, as, as may be determined depending on public health concerns, to consider the above referenced application. Be it further resolved, the applicant is hereby directed to comply with section two-fifty, forty of the Village Code regarding notification of the public hearing.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the resolution schedule.
Can I suggest in addition?
No.
Rather than just the scope of building, also potentially removing a driveway over a high-pressure gas transmission easement?
This is with respect to-
To the notice. It says, a public hearing.
The public hearing.
The public hearing says, here you hear, you're gonna build an addition on a house. But the safety issue is that they're also gonna be demolishing, at least the proposal as it's written.
A driveway.
A pavement located over the top of a high-pressure gas transmission line, or you could say a twenty-four-inch Tennessee interstate gas transmission line. To me, it's like a public safety issue, that the, anybody that wants, that lives nearby that wants to come. It's the same thing if you're putting a hedge, or you're possibly flooding someone else's property. People in nearby areas should know it's part of the project. That's my opinion, but if, if the rest of you think that's overkill?
I don't, I mean, I don't have any objections.
I think you should try and phrase it a little bit less terrifying, if I were you.
I wouldn't even do, I wouldn't even do it this.
I appreciate that.
I mean, you can say it, but you can, you can find a way to just say that there are, there are issues of, of the pipeline, and it, you know, you don't, you don't have to go into the details of what could possibly happen.
I mean, if I was a neighbor, I'd want to know. But, then again, they hopefully do know.
How long you been the owner of the home?
Four years.
So the driver was there when you bought it? Okay, that's good. Did you know it was there when you bought it? Yeah.
We had that, we had that agreement done before we bought the house.
Right, and, and you knew exactly what kind of a pipe it was?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
It runs through a lot of the town, I would say.
Yes, it does.
I, I guess it begs the question, did the pipeline give the approval to construct the driveway over the, over the easement?
They actually approved that they would fix the driveway, too, if they had to come and repair it and destroy the driveway, they would also agree they would repair the driveway, too.
Okay, so they knew the driver was built?
I have a feeling it's gonna be far less intimidating than it sounds here.
There's a fence there, too, the only thing known about it, so.
They know everything that's there.
Not, not that there isn't a consideration here, but-
They wrote that agreement, the play yard was there, we bought that house, so.